All right. We will call this meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open to the public for attendance and participation. The meeting is also being livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation. At the link identified on the agenda, emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting have been distributed to the city council prior to tonight. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kirchner.
Present.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Espandola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
All right. Mr. Chaffin, can you please read our closed session items for tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item on for closed session. It's conference with real property negotiator, government code section 54956.8. The properties are five APNs as identified in the agenda. The negotiator is Diana Langley, City Manager. The negotiating parties are Habitat for Humanity, and under negotiation is price in terms of payment. Are there any recusals for those items?
Why do you ask, sir? Yes, I have to recuse myself from the APN that's on Providence Court because I live within the 300 feet of that. So, is there any other recusals? This time, is there any comments from the public?
I'm south of the moose line. Okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep. All right. Okay. Hearing no comments from the public, with that, we will go into our closed session. All right. I'm on call to order the regular meeting. The successor agency to the redevelopment agency. That's a hearing coming up later. Anyway, this meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation. At the link identified on the agenda, emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to tonight's meeting. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
I'm here.
Councilmember Espandola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
All right. Great. We will have tonight's invocation given by Ken Cunningham, who is an elder at Cornerstone Church of Yuba City, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Gus Becerra. So if you'd please stand. Ken, you have the floor.
Let us pray. Our gracious God and Heavenly Father, we thank you for the dedication and courage of these public servants who desire to serve our community when much of our public discourse is filled with political division and distrust. We ask that as our elected officials, you would give them the wisdom and insight they need in order to govern judiciously. May your common efficacious grace empower them in their discussion and in any decisions they make tonight. Help them to act with clarity and conviction for what is good and right and not just mere political expediency. Through their God-given authority, may their governance serve the common good and promote the well-being and flourishing of our community. Bless them and our community, we humbly ask, in the name of Jesus, the wellspring of every good and perfect gift from whom all blessings flow. Amen.
Mr. Chairman, pledge.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chaffin, can you report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was one reportable action that we need to report out on. The council previously approved litigation on October 5, 2021. The voting tally was unanimous with all council members present. That litigation now has been formally commenced, and so we are making an additional announcement, just to make sure it's clear for the public. The case name is Napa County Flood Control Water -- Flood Control and Water Conservation District, Solano County Water Agency, and the City of Yuba City versus the California Department of Water Resources. If you're interested, the case number is 34-2022-00323389. This case involves a contract dispute where DWR, the Department of Water Resources, has improperly interpreted its obligations to the city and improperly accounted for the city's NOD allocation resulting in a carryover supply, which has resulted in a loss of carryover water storage in the city in the amount of 960 acre feet. The city is attempting to recover that and make sure that the interpretation is correct so that the community has its full allotment of water. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chaffin. We'll move on to agenda modifications. In order to accommodate the public hearing on item number eight, the consideration of inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water and wastewater services on secured tax roll, that will be moved from the consent to the first business item. Is there any other changes, modifications from the council? Seeing none, then we will proceed as it's -- with that one change. Now we get to the fun stuff, ceremonial presentation. So I would like the council to join me down front, along with Ms. Cindy Rosser. This is absolutely a real treat personally for me to be at the mayorship when we get to do this, but I know for the city and the community. For those of you that haven't realized, we've got this family around here that's kind of special in the hub area, and what's your last name again? The Rosser family. Not only do they have one person in the rodeo hall of fame, they now have two. And Cindy was just inducted in July. And I felt that it was very fitting because we are the Twin Cities, there's such a connection. You were actually born in Yuba City, that we take the time to recognize and honor you. We're not cocky about that, guys. So Ms. Cindy Rosser, Pro Rodeo Hall of Fame 2022. Whereas Marysville native and all-around cowgirl Cindy Rosser was inducted into the 2022 Pro Rodeo Hall of Fame on July 16, 2022 in Colorado Springs, Colorado. And whereas Cindy was born and raised in Marysville, daughter of legendary cowboy cotton Linda Rosser, she grew up riding and training horses, and the rodeo runs deep in her veins. It is her life's work. And whereas she joined the Girls Rodeo Association, Women's Professional Rodeo Association, that's the WPRA, in 1969, and served 20-plus years on the Board of Directors. That's commitment. Whereas Cindy's life and career has been heavily involved in everything rodeo. Cindy has been awarded the 1986 Professional Rodeo Cowboy Association Secretary of the Year, 1998 National Finals Rodeo Secretary, 2012 Ram National Circuit Finals Rodeo Secretary, presented the American flag in countless opening rodeo ceremonies, trained numerous horses on specialty tricks such as to jump through paper, standing in a Liberty Bell, a birthday cake, a ring of fire, and more. Your dad put you up to some of those, didn't he? Yeah. Produced and designed openings and sponsor flags at the National Final Rodeo for 10 years. And in case you didn't know what the NFR is, that is the Super Bowl of rodeos. Whereas in 1995, Cindy was named the Coca-Cola WPRA Woman of the Year. In 2015, she received the Lenora Reimer Heritage Award through the WPRA, and in 2019 was honored with the Tad Lucas Award from the National Cowboy Museum. And in 2020, she was chosen as a recipient of the PRCAs, Donita Barnes Contract Personnel Lifetime Award. Man, that's a tongue twister, sorry. Cindy is also a member of American Bucking Bull, Inc., and has sat on the Board of Directors for more than six years. And whereas Cindy Rosser has been a loyal supporter of the Women's Professional Rodeo Association for decades, and has worked, lived, breathed every facet of the rodeo industry. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dave Shaw, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby recognize and honor Cindy Rosser for being inducted to the 2022 Pro Rodeo Hall of Fame. We urge all of our residents in the City of Yuba City to join us in celebrating Cindy's success and induction into the 2022 Pro Rodeo Hall of Fame.
I want to thank you very much. My mom and dad bought a place on 40 Mile Road next to my grandpa Dutch Ruble. I don't know if any of you ever heard that name, but that's how we came to Marysville. And you said I was born here in Yuba City. And then they bought the Cottons Cowboy Corral the end of, well, 1956, 57, and the Flying New Rodeo about the same time. So we've been here forever. This is our home, and we love it. And come and see us at the Marysville Stampede in September. Thank you very much.
Cindy, thank you. And I can say now, from all the years of being around the rodeo, there's -- it's a tight-knit community, but you know when this lady is around the rodeo that you're at, because everybody knows where Cindy's at.
Thank you.
I'm getting back on a horse here in a few weeks. All right. If we could have the Yip family join us. Another great thing we get to do is honor families and businesses here in town. And, you know, the Yip family and your restaurant has been a staple of Yuba City for a mighty long time. So we want to take this opportunity to recognize you guys this evening. So, and The Chinese Garden is the restaurant, and it's been 35 years in business. And whereas the City of Yuba City would like to celebrate and recognize the Yip family, owners of The Chinese Garden for 35 years in business, and whereas on July 15, 1987, The Chinese Garden was established and opened its doors at 812 Gray Avenue after relocating from Marysville, California, yay, where it operated as The Bamboo Garden for 10 years. And whereas The Chinese Garden has become an icon in the community and is known as "The Chinese Restaurant." And whereas the actively -- whereas they actively donate back to the community in the form of donations and sponsorship over the years to countless organizations and charities. The name Yip has become synonymous with the annual Bakaai Parade and the Hop Sing Organization. And whereas The Chinese Garden became a business to imitate in the midst of a global pandemic and its ability to adapt to a hugely successful takeout method. So, good for you guys. Whereas The Chinese Garden employs several employees, and between Mimi, their mom, Anna and Peter, have combined 135 years of experience in business. Now therefore be resolved that I, Dave Shaw, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby applaud and congratulate the entire Yip family, the owners of The Chinese Garden, on the 35th anniversary of their model business, and look forward to many more years ahead.
Well, my brother Peter and I would like to thank everybody for a fabulous 35 years. We know our dad is looking down from heaven for -- from us. He passed away two years ago, and we're trying to run the family restaurant without him, which has been very, very tough, but we're still here. So, but thank you very much for all your support, and everybody, thank you.
Once again, I would like to reiterate what my sister said. We thank the community for all the support that they've offered to us throughout the years and all the patronage, and especially through the tough time of COVID. And I think this is the same from all the businesses around here, that they appreciate your support to the local businesses and allow them to thrive and just to succeed. And fun fact, one of the reasons why we came to the Yuba Sutter area was the fact that my dad's aunt and uncle Chester Lee and Mary Lee, whom some of you may or may not know or have heard of, were the original owners of the Lee's Canton. So we could have landed anywhere in America, but we landed here. So we're grateful for, like I said, all your patronage and everything that's been happening in this area, and thank you.
All right. If we could have Desiree Silva from the Yuba City Certified Farmer's Market. I told you you got to give a two-hour speech after this, right? No, this is to recognize the farmer's market and all the work that you've done over there. And August 7 through the 13, 2022, is National Farmer's Market Week. So with that, whereas the farmer's markets serve a significant outlet for small to medium, new and beginning agricultural producers to market a variety of products, in turn generating revenue that supports the sustainability of family farms and the revitalization of rural communities nationwide. And whereas the market is a place where food is sold directly from the farmer to the consumer, farmers and ranchers provide our community with access to healthy foods produced locally and regionally through farmer's markets, which are expanding and evolving to accommodate the demand for a diverse array of agricultural products. And whereas the farmer's markets offer low-income women, infant children, and seniors participating in the WIC and senior farmer's market nutrition programs respectively, the opportunity to redeem their benefits for fresh produce. And the farmer's market is a gathering place to bring your children, your family, listen to some local music, meet up with some friends, or just get a taste of a small-town life in downtown Yuba City. And whereas the Silva family and Desiree, were the market founders for many years, have been the Yuba City Certified Farmer's Market managers who oversee market events every week and represent the -- and promote the market and the community, and have supported for over 25 years the WIC and Senior Farmer's Market Nutrition Programs. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dave Shaw, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the week of August 7 through 13, 2022, as National Farmer's Market Week. We call upon the people of Yuba City and our local area to celebrate farmer's markets, the market managers, and families who provide wholesome produce to all, and even though we're past kind of the 13th continuance all month.
So I'd like to say thank you so much for this. I believe it's a great honor. I don't want to get a little choked up, but this was started by my mother-in-law and father-in-law, Dan and Candace Silva, who are looking down, and I know that they're happy that I'm able to continue on the farmer's market. And it is, I just absolutely am thankful to the community who still comes out every single Saturday, the customers. Without them, there would be no us. And the city for providing me that beautiful town square fountain, you know, and not having an issue with me being there every single year, and supporting what we bring to this community. So I thank my customers, the city, and, you know, honestly, my mom and dad for bringing it here and keeping it going, and I'm honored to continue it on. Thank you so much.
Those are some of the best things we get to do in our roles of serving the city, is recognize people. So with that, we will move on to public communication. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Excuse me. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. We did have one written request from Mr. Piara Joel, and he is not here tonight. I did speak with him just prior to the meeting, and we will be seeing him, I'm sure, in a few weeks at a future meeting, as he's pursuing other avenues right now with the same issue that he's brought forth over the past eight or 10 meetings. So with that, we will move on. I do have one speaker card. Ms. Heather Esman, if you will -- you have three minutes. If you will state your name, address, and you have the floor.
I can't speak as quickly as your council, but anyways, I'll give it a try. So, name Heather Esman, live here in Yuba City. First, thank you, thank you, Diana. I need to say it on record. I don't think that if it wasn't for you guys, we would have Sanborn paved as quickly as it was, and I really appreciate that. I walk our dog in the morning there, and it's much nicer to be able to do that now because it's actually wider. So anyways, I'd like to address an issue that came up last month. Casa de Esperanza had its annual Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event. Wearing my high heels today. About five men were there. This includes Elijah. He got his picture in the paper. There were more women volunteers at the event than male participants. I had a young female reporter for the Peel Democrat who knew the area, meet me there and take her own pictures, but none of you were there. There was not one local politician, fireman, police, or sheriff's officer there. There was nobody there. It was embarrassing. The reporter told me your absence speaks volumes about how this community sees sexual violence, and I wanted to assure her, but I don't know how I can do that. So you might have been busy that Saturday, or maybe you didn't know, I don't know, but if you support Casa de Esperanza and their efforts to combat domestic violence against women in our community, I urge you, everyone of the men in this room, I'm looking at the policeman also, to put your money where your feet should have been. Casa's looking for donated goods like new-packaged twin sheets, as well as any financial funding you can give, and you can call them at 674-5400 and arrange for them to either drop off or pick up if you have a check. Secondly, the city council meeting, that was last week, I would have loved to have attended. Unfortunately, I received it on Tuesday at 2:11 on the email, and I knew that it wasn't prior to that on your website, because I had printed out the meeting for Sutter County, and I had looked at yours as well. So anyways, it'd be nice if we could participate in those. I also gave you a little sheet right here, so you can see that on the back of it. It shows how many electric vehicles we have. We have about 604 registered electric vehicles in Sutter County. And today, read this, that there's a notice for public hearing from Marysville. The City of Marysville is approving, what does it say here, an amendment to the Building and Construction Code titled Electric Vehicle Charging Stations. That's part of their municipal code to establish local regulations for streamlining electrical vehicle charging stations. So you let them beat us to it. Your wait-and-see attitude, let them win and beat us to anybody that's interested to come into this area. So I'm sending this out to you guys. I'm challenging you, please, and I'll be happy to give that to you if you want to look at the number, to look into that, to see if we can't catch up with them, so that if anybody's interested in our community, they're not going over there, they're coming over here as well. So, thank you.
All righty, thank you. Is there any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Mr. Chaffin?
Just very briefly, I do want to point out, I always appreciate it when this Iceman speaks. It's always so exciting for me. We actually do have an electric vehicle charging ordinance in place, and in fact, the city's going to be updating it because there's new AB 970 requirements that go into effect January 1st. So you're going to be seeing that at future meetings. City Council, you're also going to be seeing that at future meetings, but we are up to speed with regards to the AB 1236 requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaffin. Okay. Any other comments from the public? Okay? All right. And hearing none, we will move on to the consent calendar. And all the matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Do we have any public comments on items five through seven or nine through 15, because number eight has been moved to business? Is there any comments from the public? All right, that was you. Any comments from the public? Hearing none, back to the council for either comments, questions, or action.
To the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve consent calendar items five through 15, with the exception of agenda item eight.
Second.
I have a motion by the vice mayor, a second by councilperson Espandola. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. All right, let's go to agenda item eight, which is the consideration of inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water and wastewater services on the secured tax roll. And Ms. Woods, thank you for being here tonight. She's our customer service manager. You have the floor.
Before you, for consideration, is the delinquent account listing for water and wastewater services to be placed on the secured property tax roll. As background, in 2016, council adopted a municipal code update that allows for unpaid accounts to be included on the property tax bill as an additional effort to resolve unpaid balances. This is a tool used in addition to many billing efforts, some of which include monthly billing notices to all parties associated with the bill, such as tenants, property owners, and/or property management companies, demand letters and collection letters sent to all bill holders, including property owners, and the use of the state intercept program, in which we submit unpaid balances to the state for collection through tax return interception. Over the past year, the city has also applied for state relief funds, resulting in over $500,000 being applied to accounts to relieve some of these unpaid debts. The attached list that you guys were provided, which as of today now sits at just over $93,000 for 243 accounts, we've entered into 36 payment plans since the original list was created and received just over, just under $33,000 in payments since the list was created. Staff recommends upon completion of this public hearing that council adopt a resolution for the inclusion of delinquent charges for water and wastewater services on the secured tax roll, in the same manner as the general taxes, and direct that a lien also be placed on the subject properties. Thank you.
Okay. I come back to the council. Does the council have any questions this time? Okay. Any questions? Okay, any questions? All right, then hearing none, we will move to the public hearing. So, the public hearing on the consideration of inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties of water and wastewater services on the secured tax roll is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Do we have any public comment on this item? Hearing none, we will, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing this back to the council for action.
To the mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to adopt item number eight, with the recommendations to adopt a resolution for the inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water and wastewater services on the secured tax roll, in the same manner as the general taxes, direct that a lien also be placed on subject properties. And I, with my own editorial on the side, is, our team has done such good work in trying to resolve this for a long haul and a long time, Katrina, so I really appreciate all the work that you've been doing on this item.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by councilmember Esmondola, and I have a second by vice mayor Kirchner. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Woods. Okay, we will move on to agenda item 16. This is the consideration to approve development plan 22-01, which is a Uba City self-storage. And Mr. Moody, you have the floor, sir.
All right, so good evening, mayor, members of the city council. The item before you is in regards to development plan 22-01, the Highway 20 self-storage. And so, this project before you, based on the size, really, so we'll get into it and I'll work through the project description, but in the zoning code, once a project exceeds warehouse and outdoor storage exceeds 100,000 square feet, then it comes before the, it goes to the planning commission for a recommendation, which occurred just recently, last month, and then now it's coming to the city council for final review. And so, we'll get into it here. So, the property, south side of Highway 20, west of George Washington, about 700 feet, it's nine and a half acres in size, it's zoned as M1, so it is, it's an industrial area, its general plan is, is business, technology, and light industrial. And so what they're proposing there is to have storage and outdoor, so mini storages, and then outdoor storage for RVs and boats. So this is by right, in this area, that, that storage can occur in that zoning, so the zoning matches what's being proposed. And there's an interesting overlay district that was put on this, and so historically, this area was C3 zoning. And here in 2017, they came back and re-zoned that through the general, through the city council to modify the general plan and the zoning, which actually, and so the proposed use aligns with that change. But with that, there was an overlay combining district that was placed on it, that I'll get into, that had a caveat on the, on the frontage, on the design. So what are they proposing? So they're proposing basically 94,000 square feet of mini storage space, and approximately 75,000 square feet of outdoor storage, in a two-phase project. So this is the first phase, nine buildings with a office and a living area that's 2,200 square feet up towards the front, when you first come in, and then at the back of the property with this phase one, there's approximately 75,000 square foot in gravel area that is going to be used for outdoor storage. Phase two of the project would then convert that outside storage into an additional mini storage use. And so with this coming to the council, and we, instead of piecemeal it and coming back for a future phase, we're looking to approve both phases with that. But phase one is for the RV and boat storage. So the project, it's, it's surrounded by light industrial uses, including other self-storages immediately to the west and to the south. There's no nearby residences or other types of uses that would be sensitive. Mini storages are historically low impact. There's not a lot of noise, there's not a lot of traffic. As such, there's not expected there will be any compatibility issues with the neighboring uses. This gets into that combining district that I talked about. With that special combining district that was applied in 2017, there was an emphasis that with this project being on Highway 20, that there, there be some, a higher level of standard as far as what the architectural element looks like as you're coming into town, they want it to look good as you're coming into Uba City. And so with that, there was a criteria that it was to go to the planning commission for review, design review. And, and also, the city's been working with the applicant to make sure it doesn't look like just, you know, a beige metal building that you come into it. So there's been some back and forth, and we, we've worked with the applicant to come to, to a level of standard that we think's acceptable. And so with that, they've provided a couple of different elevations, and with, why there's two different options here, is that there's really some, some talk about the material types with that. So option one is this, this metal paneling, and then with corrugated metal out here, and you see some articulations and trying to put some depth on the building as you come through, and then also there'd be some landscaping. So this is looking from Highway 20 at the north, north side of the building. Option two, based on materials, it doesn't come through as well on the slide, but they've, they've mixed it up where this is corrugated metal, and then you have some stucco elements here. And they're worried based on paneling and where they're at, that this, this might be the option that they're going, they're not worried about it, but they're leaning towards this option that this might be, so they want to provide both, so that, so that the council knows what it might look like. And then, so as we work through the final design, that will come through with the building plan submitted, where we'll, really staff will look at that and kind of finalize the exact material types and how, how it's matched up. That's what the building's proposed to look like. There's a landscape plan, it's, it doesn't come through well here, but as part of this, there's going to be some nice landscaping, and it's conditioned, it's part of the conditions of approval that along that, along that road frontage there, that there's, you know, you'll have trees and compliance with our codes. And then, one of the elements that, that's special to this site, is that it will have septic. And so, in Uba City, that's not a typical thing. But where, where it's at in the world, is that there's no immediate sewer lines, and then based off the need for, based off the need for sewage disposal, really, they have small living quarters and an office with a bathroom, there's really a low demand for, for the sewage. And so, in the city's municipal code, there are some options for, for that, and so with that, in the conditions of approval, we've called out coordination with the county, with their environmental health department, and then also in accordance with the city's standards regarding that. And so, I just wanted to highlight that, that's a little bit different. So in that landscape area along the front, there'll be a leach field, and then it's going to be well landscaped, will ensure it's well landscaped around it, for the replacement We looked at traffic, as part of the, the findings with the development plan on its impacts, there were some real concerns in the beginning, because there was a lot of talk about this turning into a truck stop, and just how would they navigate the trucks in and out of that frontage road at George Washington and with the signal. And so with that, there was a condition at it, that there's no commercial trucks, it's really for RVs and boats specifically for that, in that back area. And with that, it was routed to Caltrans and, and looked at by our staff, and basically the, the traffic demand was considered insignificant and not generated to a level that would cause an issue. Environmentally, it was assessed, it was prepared for this project in accordance with SEQA guidelines. The staff had determined there was no evidence in the record that the project may have a significant effect on the environment, and recommends that adoption of a mitigate negative declaration for this self-storage project is appropriate. And so with the development plan, there needs to be these four findings that need to be made, and that with that, the site is, site for the proposed use is adequate in size and shape to accommodate said use, the streets serving the site are adequate to carry the qual, quantity of traffic generated by the proposed, proposed use, the site design, design of the buildings, the scale of the project will complement the neighborhood, and regarding the application satisfies at least one finding, that really has to do with flood findings that, that actually was an item earlier on today, that now that we have consistency for that item. And so, so with that, staff is recommending that you conduct a public hearing, and then adopt a resolution recommending approval of the environmental assessment and of the proposed development plan. And so, here tonight, we also have the project applicant, they're here to help answer any questions, and I'm here to answer any further questions on the matter.
All right. Mr. Moody, I do have one question, and I think I know the answer, just for clarification. Being the dissonance septic, and it's a parking facility, they're not planning on incorporating dumping facility as well into this, with that septic for the RVs or trailers or anything? Is that correct?
It's definitely not sized that way, and we wouldn't approve that through, it would, it would be, have to be reviewed and approved, but it's nothing sized or been talked about that to be in allowed use.
Okay. All right. Is there any other questions?
To the mayor. Along with what you were just asking, so there, there's no, there is no connection? How far out that there would be no connection to our existing?
So the connection is basically about 700 feet to the east, and so there's a lift station there to the, at where the canal crosses almost to George Washington Boulevard. And so, based on the gravity line and the flow, we would really, we felt that it's a burden that, to run that line that far at the current cost is, is a real burden for that particular property and for the demand that they're using.
What about water?
Water is there, and is, is on the adjacent property, and it will be a requirement for them to connect and extend the water across the frontage.
Okay. So how, what's the parameters on the septic tanks, are you saying, on the size for that property? You know?
Well, we've basically allowed them to provide service to the caretaker and the office for the septic system, and they've shown a layout based on what their expected replacement area is, and we've conditioned it that they will need to get the permit through environmental health, and then also coordinate with the city.
Okay. On the lighting of the facility, would that be, because it's, it's industrial, so is there?
There's one streetlight, I believe, is called out, and the conditions of approval for the driveway. And so that would be, kind of meet the city's standards, where we would call, call out a streetlight every so often, and then we'd enter into a lighting and landscape maintenance district to help pay, to pay for that.
Pay for, under, under the lighting district issue? Okay, all right. And then, you know, my, one of my favorite topics, water again. On the landscape, can we request drought-tolerant landscape?
We absolutely can.
And don't they have to meet that anyway to meet state requirements?
Yes, that's a very good point. With the Mwellow standards now, they do an analysis when it comes through, as far as meeting the state's threshold.
I mean, the designs are really cool, I like both designs, and I like the title Cube Smart, that's, that's really, that's very innovative. And so, just, you know, those few other things would be helpful, and the plans of the phase one and two seem pretty, I mean, there's, there's a lack of storage, there's lack of storage for RVs, you know, we had a discussion about that, so, those were my questions, and thank you for answering them.
All right. Any other questions from the council? All right. Then the, we will move to the public hearing. Public hearing on the consideration to approve development plan 22-01, Uba City self-storage is now open. If there are any, any members of the public that would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Any comments from the public on this item? Any comments? Okay. You said that the developers were here?
Right.
Would they like to make a comment? You're welcome to at this time.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Just want to say we're really happy to work on this project, and want to give kudos to Ben Moody, Ashley, and Jess Preett, they've been awesome to work with. Thank you, sir, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, hearing no further comments on this issue, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing this back to council for action.
To the county mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
To move to adopt a resolution to approve, do we have to read the whole thing? Item B, item 16B.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Esmondola, a second by councilmember Harris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving to agenda item 17, Uba City Residential Streetlight Maintenance Districts, Walton Area and Terre Boina Levying Assessments. Mr. Moody.
You know, and so I'm going to introduce and turn this over to our associate engineer, Josh Wolfe. He's been in-house, and as an associate engineer now, he's going to get more familiar with the dais here, with the podium and coming up and presenting to you. So be easy on him, but I know he does a great job.
Welcome to the podium, sir.
Thank you, Ben, and good evening, mayor, and members of the city council. I have three presentations that, for you tonight, all regarding lighting and landscaping. The first one we're going to start with tonight is the Uba City Residential Streetlight Maintenance District. So we have two residential streetlight maintenance districts in town, one of them being the Terre Boina area. This one is primarily along Royal Ranchero Avenue, or Royal Ranchero Drive, there's another pockets on Monroe Drive, and then a couple areas to the southeast of that. And then we also have the Walton area, which is primarily to the east, or sorry, to the west of Walton Avenue, between Bog Road and going just south of Franklin Avenue. So the city annually levies and collects special assessments to power streetlights in the, in the Walton Avenue and Terre Boina areas. The districts were formed under the county's jurisdiction, the city annexed the districts and took over administration in 2009. Prior to 2009, both districts were charged the maximum levy. On July 5th, 2022, council ordered the engineer of, the engineer to file reports with, for the districts. On July 19th, 2022, council adopted resolutions of intention to order improvements and set a public hearing for August 16th tonight to establish assessments for fiscal year 2022-23. The engineers' annual report has been prepared and are on file with the city clerk's office. The reports describe each district, improvements within the districts, and methods of assessment for each parcel. If you're looking at the fiscal impact here, Terre Boina district, the revenue is 22,000, just a little over 22,000, expenditures are 23,000, so just a little bit more than the revenue, and the projected reserve balance is 112,854. The Walton area, the revenue is 81,677, expenditures are 74,373, and the reserve balance is negative 24,000. Operating costs for the Walton area have neared or exceeded the maximum levy for the districts multiple times over the past 10 years. Operating costs for Walton have increased, while operating costs for Terre Boina district have decreased since 2015, 2016. Tonight, we have a couple of alternatives. First alternative would be modifying or reducing the assessment amounts, or canceling the districts and funding the lighting with alternative resources. Second alternative would be modifying the districts to include COLA provisions, which would allow us to levy at higher rates. So, the recommendations are, A, conduct a public hearing, and B, adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 22-23 within Uba City Residential Streetlight Maintenance District Number One, Terre Boina, and Residential Streetlight Maintenance District Number One, Walton Area. If anyone has any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the council? All right. Then with that, we will open the public hearing on the Uba City Residential Streetlight Maintenance District Walton Area and Terre Boina Area. Levying Assessments is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Any comments from the public on this? from the public on this item? Any comments from the public on this item? Any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. I will close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to go ahead and move to adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 2022 through 2023 within the Yuba City Residential Street Light Maintenance District Number One, Terre Boina, and Residential Street Light Maintenance District Number One, Walton Area.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Boom Garden, a second by Vice Mayor Kirchner. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. We will move on now to agenda item 18. So, Mr. Wolf, you get to stay at the podium. This is Yuba City Landscape Maintenance District Number One, Stabler Lane, Garden Highway area, levying assessment.
Through the mayor, I need to recuse myself from this item as I live within the geography of this.
All righty. All righty. Give him just a moment, and then, Mr. Wolf, you will have the floor.
All right. Thank you again, Mayor and council. Tonight's second item is regarding Yuba City Light, or sorry, Yuba City Landscape Maintenance District Number One. This district is different from the first one that was presented earlier, being that this district only covers the landscape and related costs for a couple districts within or a couple zones within the city. The first zone being 1A, which is the Stabler area. You can see here, it's along Stabler Lane, primarily on the east side in between Highway 99, just south of the Regency area. Then the second area is a mix of both residential and commercial. This district or this zone is primarily Garden Highway, a little bit along Railroad Avenue over here. And then there are some newer districts to the north, 1B1 and 1B2, that are commercial. So the city annually levies and collects special assessments to maintain landscaping improvements within these areas. The assessments were approved by the property owners of record at the time of the district formations. Zones of Benefit A and B do not have provisions for cost of living adjustments. In order to be able to cover maintenance expenses in the past, the city has charged maximum levies for zones A and B. Recently, Zones of Benefit B underscore one and B underscore two were formed, and they were formed with COLA provisions. So they are levied accordingly every year based on the cost or based on inflation. Expenditures in districts A and B have exceeded revenue due to the lack of COLA provisions. In order to combat this, the city has cut costs and used general fund transfers from general funds and streets and road funds in order to save money while also maintaining levels, previous levels of maintenance. Specific examples, the city has reduced professional services, water, and administrative expenses, so revenues would exceed expenditures. The city previously attempted to modify District Number One to include COLA provisions through a Proposition 218 process, but the result of that was residents not providing majority vote to join or to incorporate COLA provisions. Without the ability to increase the rates, the maintenance costs have exceeded the revenues for the districts. In order to restore the maintenance levels, the city could attempt to increase the rates through a Proposition 218 process again. On July 5, 2022, city council ordered the engineer to file a report with the district. On July 19, 2022, the council adopted a resolution approving the reports and a resolution of intention ordering improvements and setting a public hearing for tonight, August 16, 2022. Engineers report has been filed and is prepared or has been prepared and is on file with the city clerk's office. The report describes the district, the improvements therein, and the method of assessments and the proposed assessment for each parcel. For the fiscal impact, Zone of Benefit A, the revenue this year was $22,000. Expenditures were 19,674, so slightly under, and the projected reserve balance is about $3,000. For Zone of Benefit B, the revenue this year was $66,250. Expenditures were $64,988, and the projected reserve balance is 29,700, or $29,778. It's worth noting that the projected reserve fund balance is the total of both the capital replacement reserve plus the operating cost reserves. And the dollar amounts for both Zones of Benefit B, B1, and B2 are included within that column or within row B. The reserve balance in Zone of Benefit B consists of general previous general fund transfers. Staff recommends maintaining this reserve balance to cover unforeseen expenses. In the future, the city may need to reduce maintenance levels further in District One or utilize other funds to maintain previous levels of maintenance. Tonight, our alternatives for this district are modify by reducing assessment amounts or canceling the district and funding landscaping with alternative sources. We could also modify District Number One to include COLA provisions, or we could direct other funding sources to supplement the district revenues. Our recommendation is to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 2022 '23 pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972. I'd be happy to ask or answer any questions about this district.
Any questions from the council? I do have one for you, sir. Do you recall about how long ago the Prop 218 process was gone through? Was that a decade ago or more? Because I was thinking it was a while back.
Yeah, I don't specifically know off the top of my head. Diana, I believe, was a participant in that process. She may know better than I would.
Yeah, it's probably about a decade ago.
Okay, it was just a point of reference, because we are starting to get different emails as I forwarded to you from different people that are looking at these maintenance districts. And at some point in the future, we know that we may have to look at that at some point in the future. So, all right, thank you. Any other questions from council? None? All right. The public hearing on the Yuba City Landscape Maintenance District One, Stabler Lane and Garden Highway area, levying assessment is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on the issue, please provide your statement via public comment, state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public at this time? Zessman?
Hi. So Heather Zessman again. I was here, I believe, last year when you guys were talking about this, probably the year before as well. I so there's, I was also at the meeting last week for the county where they were having some financial problems, and they addressed those by trying to put the 1% tax on the ballot. I don't know, there wasn't any clarification at that point if any of that is coming or trickling down into Yuba City. There's no clarification. People were asking that multiple times, and nobody said anything. But there, everything needs to be funded in a manner that meets the requirements. And if these people moved into that area, knowing that there were trees there, knowing that the trees look nice, they don't look as nice as they used to, and a lot of the area is starting to get kind of run down. I think it should be up to them to decide if they want to pay the $5 or $10 a year in order to put that back up to a certain level. I think that some of them don't quite understand that that's the situation. So if there's no COLA on it, then either COLA has to be built in, or you're going to have to come up with some other method. But I totally think, I mean, I was at the other district, but there's nothing, I don't have any lighting or anything like that on my on my property. But I do think that it should be up to them, just like they were saying at the meeting last week at the county meeting as far as the tax, 1% taxes concerned, it should be up to the public to decide whether or not. And I know it's expensive when you're doing Prop 18 stuff, but still that maybe weave that together with something else, so it's not quite as expensive. But to let them just make those decisions, because general fund monies, so that you can water the trees, just that just doesn't make any sense. It's there. They got trees like that. We don't in our in our neighborhood. So they moved into that neighborhood, and they made that that decision. So it's up to them to decide what level of service they want. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? All right. Hearing none. Hearing no further comment on this issue. I'm closing the the hearing and bringing this back to council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 22 '23 pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Okay. So I have a motion by Vice Mayor Kirchner and a second by Councilmember Esmondola. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. We can get Councilmember Boom Garden. Okay, you want to go ahead? Let me read the item or you and, okay. We're going to move to agenda item 19, Yuba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance Districts Number Two, Three, Four, and Five, Town Center and 69 subdivisions throughout the city. And Yuba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District Number Five, Commercial District, Levying Assessments. And as Councilmember Harris has said, he's got to recuse himself because he lives in the area, and I have to recuse myself as I reside within one of those areas.
Agenda item 19, Yuba City Lighting and Landscaping Maintenance District Number Two, Three, Four, and Five, Town Center and 69 subdivisions throughout Yuba City, and Yuba City Lighting and Landscaping Maintenance District Number Five, Commercial District, Levying Assessments, presented by Mr. Moody. Oh, Owen, I'm sorry. I'm reading off a script. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor and council. This will be the final lighting and landscape district presentation for tonight. This one is for districts numbers two through six. The difference between this one and the other two presentations is that these one, this, these districts are responsible for maintaining both lighting and landscaping and related items, not just one or the other. And these districts also contain residential for districts two through five, and then commercial for District Six. So the city annually levies and collects special assessments to maintain and service landscaping and lighting improvements throughout these districts. The assessments were approved by property owners at the time of formation of the districts. As I said, districts two through six do have COLA provisions. And the COLA is based on the Consumer Price Index adjustment from January to January. This year, the COLA was relatively high with a 7.5% increase from the previous year. On July 5, the city council ordered the engineer to file reports for the districts. And then on July 19, 2022, council adopted resolutions approving reports and resolutions setting public hearing for tonight, August 16, 2022. The engineers reports are on file in the city clerk's office. The reports describe each district, improvements, methods of assessment, and proposed assessments for each parcel. Districts Three, Four, and Six, and District Five Zones of Benefit B through L will see increases in their annual levies. District Two Zone of Benefit A and District Five Zone of Benefit A will see decreases in their levies due to surplus funding and healthy reserves. So for the fiscal impact, District Number Two, it had a revenue of $83,732 with expenditures of only $41,035. The projected reserve for that district is $111,665. For District Three, the revenue was $10,662. The expenditures were $8,676, and the projected reserve for that district is $27,566. For District Number Four, the revenue was $153,205. Expenditures were $135,737, and the projected reserve is $144,411. District Number Five, the revenue was $576,028. The expenditures were $577,970, so just slightly more than the revenue. And then the projected reserve was $221,880. And then finally, the Commercial District, District Number Six, the revenue was $29,000. The expenditures were $14,792. And then it had a projected reserve balance of $141,897, or $141,897. And just to note, that reserve balance for that one most primarily or the largest amount of the money for that reserve is within capital replacement funds, not operating expenses. The operating expenses are kind of are more in line with the expenditures for for that district. So to note, the projected reserve fund balance is a total of the capital replacement reserve plus the operating reserves. The alternative for this item is to modify the assessment amounts or to cancel the districts and fund lighting, landscaping, and various other items with alternative sources. Tonight, we recommend that we conduct a public hearing and then that we adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 2022 '23 for the Yuba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District Numbers Two, Three, Four, Five, and Six in Yuba City. I have, the districts are pretty large and throughout the city. So if you'd like, I can go through these, or we can just get to any questions that you may have.
Any questions for the council? Very thorough. Thank you. Okay. The public hearing on the Yuba City Lighting and Landscaping Maintenance Districts Number Two, Three, Four, and Five, Town Center and 69 subdivisions throughout Yuba City, and Yuba City Lighting and Landscaping Maintenance District Number Five, Commercial District, Levying Assessments is now open. Is there, are, is there any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue? Please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Any comments? Any comments? Okay. Hearing no further comment on this issue, I am now closing public hearing and bringing the matter back to council.
Through the Vice Mayor, I would like to move to adopt item eight, excuse me, 19B.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Esmondola and a second from Councilmember Boom Garden. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Ayes have it. Motion passes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. We are now to agenda item 20. And this is the successor agency to the redevelopment agency item, which we alluded to in the in the opening comments. So 20 is the Declaration of Surplus Land Successor Agency to the Yuba City Redevelopment Agency Properties. Ms. Langley, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So in 2011, based upon a Supreme Court decision, all redevelopment agencies in California were dissolved as of February 1, 2012. So prior to that date, city council declared that the city would be the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. And a long range property management plan was prepared by Fraser and Associates, which basically identified the parcels owned by the successor agency and discussed how those parcels would be disposed of or addressed. In addition to that, we have the Surplus Land Act, which which you're familiar with, but I'll go over it. So it governs the disposition of land owned by the successor agency that is determined to be no longer necessary for the successor agency's use. And in 2019, Governor Newsom signed into law AB 1486, which significantly expanded the requirements for compliance with the Surplus Land Act, with the intent to address the shortage of affordable housing in California. So what it says is that prior to sale or lease So, what it says is that prior to sale or lease of any land, the city council must, or in this case, the successor agency, must formally declare land as surplus land pursuant to a resolution and supported by written findings. And so, the procedural requirement is that the successor agency would issue a notice of availability to a housing sponsor. So, if you go to HCD's website, there's a long list of housing sponsors in the state of California, and so you would email the NOA to those housing sponsors, or if they don't provide an email address, then you send it via certified mail. Any responding entity, they would submit a notice of intent that they would like to negotiate with the successor agency for the purchase of the property. So, they have 60 days to submit that notice, and then once the successor agency receives that notice, we would have a 90-day period for good faith efforts to determine if we can come to terms on an agreement for those properties. If no housing sponsors respond to the NOA, or if the negotiations terminate, so for instance, if you can't get to, you can ask for up to fair market value. If you have a developer that's not willing to pay that, or you can't come to terms, then you would let HCD know, and they have to review the process, and then confirm whether or not you complied with the process. In addition to that, if the negotiation terminated and the land is later sold or leased to a market rate developer, they have to set aside at least 15% of any units over 10 for affordable housing. And if you violate, if HCD reviews your process and determines that you violated the process, then they can request 30% to 50% of the proceeds from the sale. So, it's a pretty significant penalties if you do not comply. So, with this, the successor agency owns a series of parcels, and so, in the long-range property management plan, there's parcel one, which, here's Calusa Frontage Road, so Highway 20, Plumas Street. I'm happy to say that this parcel was developed, and it is now the corner parcel where Stanton Optical is located. Parcels two and three are here at, here's Bridge Street, Shasta Street, B Street, and then Boyd. So, here's parcel two, the, what we refer to as the former Feather River Mills, and then this Boyd parcel. Those have been sold to Mimet Noyan, and it's exciting, because if you drive out there now, there's a Holiday Express under construction on parcel two. I would say that with this property in particular, what's important to note is the property was sold for a dollar to the developer, but there was significant environmental remediation that had to be done, and he expended a significant amount to clean that property. This map shows the remaining parcels within, here's Town Square. So, we have some successor agency properties owned in the Town Square area, and then down here at the Roundabout at Percy and Plumas and Main, there's one successor agency-owned parcel, and then a city-owned parcel. So, the parcel four is at the intersection of C and Wilbur, and it's approximately one acre. We are, we do not know the environmental status of this property, as we have not done any environmental investigation. And so, that's important to note. When we, we send out the notice of availability, we have to note if we are aware of any environmental concerns. In this case, we haven't done the study, so we don't know. Parcel five is a .2-acre parcel. Here's Wilbur Avenue, here's Stevens. So, a little .2-acre parcel right there. Parcel six is the former Yuba City Steel Site. Here's Plumas Boulevard, Franklin. Kevin Bradford spent a lot of time on this project to get clean closure through the state, and so this is a property that would be ready for development. Parcel seven is here at B Street and Wilbur Avenue. Here's the Town Square Fountain. This parcel has significant contamination, and so, through the Phase One Environmental Site Assessment, 16 recognized environmental conditions were identified. And so, not likely that we would find somebody interested in this property, but you never know, there might be another Mimet Noyan out there that is willing to take on the risk of cleaning that property. Parcel eight is, here's the Roundabout at Plumas and Main, and it's a .34-acre parcel, and then the city owns this parcel to the north of it. So, alternatives are to not proceed with declaring any of these properties surplus. With that, really what that means then is we continue to retain those properties. So, the staff's recommendation is to go ahead and declare them as surplus. And then, what's important here is the fiscal impact. Any proceeds to be received from these properties go directly to the state. And then, we would submit a request for reimbursement for any costs that we spend for the appraisals, for escrow, title, all of that, but we would not retain any of the proceeds from the sale of these properties. And with that, the recommendation is to adopt a resolution declaring certain successor agency-owned properties to be surplus land and directing the city manager to follow the procedures set forth in the Surplus Land Act for the sale of such properties. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Any questions? All right. Any comments from the public? Yes, ma'am.
So, I've been talking to Brad, number four and number seven, then basically you're trying to get rid of those. Is that my understanding? I know you can't, this isn't a conversation, but, so, if you do parcel four and parcel seven, four is just below seven, right? Yeah. So, I... There was some talk about something, and those, those areas would be great for something if we could save one, but I don't know if it was just kind of something that Brad and I were talking about, or if any of that ever got to your level. No. Well, you know, we really, really, really could use a community center, and that would be a perfect spot for it. But, obviously, if you have to get rid of those parcels, that's another situation. I mean, I don't know if there's any other ideal locations that the city owns that we'd be able to go somewhere else for. Seven, of course, is much larger, but if you have to have remediation, I don't think the city would be able to afford that, as opposed to parcel four. But whether or not you'd get a space large enough, or if that's large enough for a building, I don't, it's an acre, that should be big enough. It's just something that was kind of thrown out there, and I just thought I'd throw it out there as well, because, once you put it up for sale, it's pretty much, and it sounds like we don't get anything for it, so I'm not quite sure why you would necessarily, except, of course, the maintenance, right? That you don't want to have to deal with the maintenance. But, yeah, I was just, I'm just throwing that out there, because otherwise, if you surplus this, then it's gone, so anyways, never mind.
If I could address that, and Shannon, I might need your help with this response. With this being owned by the successor agency, it's not necessarily that the city could just use the property for our use. We would have to go through the process to actually, I believe, obtain the property, and so we still have to follow the Surplus Land Act to declare it as surplus, and then go through that property, that process, and, you know, and we don't know the environmental conditions associated with this parcel, because we haven't done the studies associated with that. So, it's not that the city, the city could retain it, or that the successor agency could retain it. The intent of the long-range property management plan is to get rid of these properties and to, because we dissolved the redevelopment agency, so we want to get these assets off the books. And so, in order to do that, we'd need to dispose of them. The city council could decide to declare it a surplus, and then have the city submit a proposal. I'm not sure how that process would work. Shannon would have to help me through that process, to purchase it. But, that, that could potentially be an option.
Any other comments from the public?
Through the mayor. Just a quick question. On number seven is, is the issue with the remediation, was that where the cannery was, Diana?
No, it was a diamond match plant, where they, they made diamond matches. And so, there was significant contamination, and with the, you know, Phase One Environmental Site Assessment, that just kind of gives you a glimpse into it. You then need to do a Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment and really go into more advanced studies and exploration. We don't know if there's groundwater contamination. We don't know the extent of the contamination. We just know that there are 16 recognized environmental conditions based upon the Phase One. We're not sure what else we would get into.
Any other comments from the public? All right, hearing none. Now, I'll come back to the council.
Through the mayor. No, you don't have a firm figure. Parcel four, just to do the, the Phase One on parcel four, any idea what that would cost?
I would guess that you're probably, for Phase One, you might be in the $50,000 range.
Then if we move on to two and three, and then we're...
I will say, though, the EPA does have some grants associated with Brownfield. You know, properties that you could explore, where they can help fund the environmental assessments, that, that's a process that you go through, but that, that could be an option as well, in terms of funding.
Would the, would the current burden of those environmental costs go back to the Oversight Committee then, or, and their funds, I mean, do they have funds to?
No, what we would recommend is to float it up to the state, to see if those are eligible for reimbursement from the state, once you get the proceeds from the properties. And so, that's something that we could, you know, through the Oversight Board, we could reach out to the state to see if those would be eligible expenses that we could get reimbursement.
I guess going back to your question of the city attorney is, the process would be is to declare it surplus, and then we would be, then we would have to be interested in, in acquiring it. Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Again, the intent of the Surplus Land Act, the modifications, is really to focus on affordable housing. And so, our proposal, and Shannon, I'm not sure how that would work, if we submit a proposal for a community center, because it's not focused on affordable housing.
There are some exceptions for public facilities, so I would need to look into exactly how that would work out, if the council was inclined to go that way. But generally, it's for affordable housing providers.
Okay. So, along those lines, I'm going to ask a follow-up question. Once we declare the property surplus, they're in the pool. So, with these questions, would it behoove us to bring this back for a hearing for the successor agency, once we get some of these questions answered, so we kind of know what those steps are, knowing that it's got to go through that, but knowing what the viable options were?
If I could offer a suggestion, once you put it in the pool, it doesn't mean that you immediately have to start cycling it through the process.
Right. Okay.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Can you carve, for instance, if you wanted to, carve four out and approve the others?
Yes. Yes, I will, yes, you can. I will say that the Oversight Board specifically requested that the city proceed with, moving forward with all of these parcels, because at some point, the Oversight Board would like to dissolve, because all of the assets are taken care of. But I don't think that there'd be an issue with carving four out. I would say, though, that you could keep four in, and then at some point, if you decide that it's not surplus, Shannon, can you go back and modify it to declare that it's not surplus?
I think there would be a process. I've actually never run into that specific circumstance before.
But regardless, the successor agency doesn't have a use for the property.
Right.
So, our only vehicle, even with these questions, is we have to declare it surplus.
Through the mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So, once we declare, you know, having been in the conversation with the Oversight Board, if we declare it and put it in the pool, are we able to then continue to do perhaps a Level One, what did you call it, testing? Or, or if we do carve it out, as colleagues are saying, how, how can we get to the testing to understand what potentially is environmental issues on that piece of land?
So, again, I would get a proposal for Phase One Environmental Site Assessment. I would float that up to the state to make sure that that's eligible for reimbursement. If it's not, that, that would just be coming out of the city's funds to do that. And then, you know, council could make a decision. We can still declare it surplus, because like I said, that's the only vehicle to get this moving forward.
Right.
That doesn't mean we have to submit the notice of availability to HCD immediately. We can hold off on that particular parcel, if there's interest in retaining this parcel, to, you know, have further discussions about, do you want to do further environmental assessment? If it's, if we can get reimbursement, we can do the environmental site assessment. That's all information we would provide in the notice of availability, because we would need to share that information with any housing sponsors, so that they have an awareness of what's on that site.
So, but if it goes into, so removing it would save us from going into that pool of listing of 200 and something people, they can then, but it takes a long time to even to get to that point where someone may have an interest in purchasing that piece of land.
No, once you declare it surplus, the next step for these parcels would be prepare the notice of availability, submit that to HCD, and also submit the notice of availability to the long list of all the housing sponsors that are on their website.
Right.
What I'm saying, though, is you could hold this one back specifically, if you want to have further discussions about it.
Yeah, it makes sense to pull it back if we can and just add the others. I don't know if anyone else would be interested in doing that.
All right, I just want to know, I'm recommending that council still declare it surplus.
Correct, but not report it
Right.
in the process, until we figure, yeah. Okay.
Repeat that. You're recommending we go ahead and declare them all surplus, because I know that's the only mechanism, but hold off on notification?
Notice of availability, yes.
Okay. But that's the successor agency, and that is a combination committee or commission there. Who is, who has the authority to hold that back, because we're not in the...
You are the successor agency.
That's what I'm thinking of. That's where I got it confused. Okay. I'm with you now.
We're the, we're the successor right now at this point.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
What was the, if I may, the, the intent of holding back, refresh my memory on that, on the number four? Why are we holding that back?
To possibly see if we would be interested in utilizing that for a city purpose in the future, whether it be a community center or anything, because of its location and its proximity.
I would, I would say we move forward with everything designated and offer it up, so someone can develop. A community center, that's too small, and we don't even know how far out, it's going to be years, years before we even get something. But, of course, I'm not going to stand in the way if you all want to do that. But, I'd say it's a lot cleaner if we just move forward, designate a surplus, and offer it up for someone who actually can develop it. But, you know, it's nothing I'm going to get upset about if we don't.
If I understand correctly, I mean, really, what we're looking at, do we declare them all, or do we omit some? That's really the choices before us tonight. The holding back's an internal thing, but we either declare everything, or we pick and choose.
Right.
Okay, so that's really what's before us, that the other part's an internal process.
Exactly. I think our purpose is here today, is it surplus or not, and it's an easy call, so.
Any other questions? Okay. If there's none, I'm looking for action from the council.
Not sure if we have to read the whole thing or not, do we? No, so, move to approve staff's recommendation on item number 20, Mr. Mayor.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, and Councilmember Harris, I just wanted to clarify for the record that the resolution has been tweaked slightly. There were a couple references to the city that have been updated to be surplus, or to be successor agency, rather than city. So, I'm assuming that your motion included those as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Harris.
Second.
I have a second from Vice Mayor Kirchner. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. She disappeared. Thank you. All right, future agenda items, item number 21. This is the opportunity to discuss any items that may have surfaced tonight, that we want to come back at a future meeting. Any future agenda from the council? Okay, hearing none. Then we will move on to our reports, and we will start with the city manager's report. Ms. Langley.
So, I'm happy to announce that we've received a FRAC grant for two electric vehicle charging stations. So, it'll have two charging, two actual chargers at two different locations, so it'll be a total of four chargers. And so, congratulations to public work staff on that grant application. The Feather to Farms program, there's been some questions about the status of that program. With the large animal cruelty case that SASSA was dealing with, they needed to deal with that immediately. And so, this fall, now that they are wrapping that case up, they, we need people to come forward who are interested in adopting chickens and the roosters. And so, we've, we haven't had people coming forward to say that they have the property to take that. So, SASSA will be, you know, getting information out there as to how people can let them know that they are willing to take chickens, so that SASSA staff can then, again, begin to rehome the chickens. Last Tuesday, we had, thank you to Spencer Morrison for...
Last Tuesday, we had, thank you to Spencer Morrison for coordinating the pension policy workshop. I personally thought it was a really informative workshop and I would encourage people to look at the presentation online. And then also thank you to council and staff for the strategic planning workshop last Thursday. The follow up items related to that are we are going to plan a council goal setting session in late January. And then staff will be bringing forward ordinance updates for related to fireworks and then also related to the parking of boats and RVs. So that's it. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. All right. I don't know if my orders got changed. I'm going back so the council knows to my standard order because it just flows easier for me. So Councilwoman Espendola.
Through, through the mayor, yeah, I was like, woo hoo, good. Our buddy goes next. I got moved. Well, we'll do it.
It's just natural for me to go end, 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 end. So anyway.
I was ready to just pay attention over here, but we, I can, I can pivot quickly here. So I apologize a little bit. It's going to be a little longer because we haven't met for a bit, but try to go through quickly here for all of us. Feather, Feather River Air Quality Management, we had a meeting, we reviewed budgets, had a training on burn days and had a lengthy discussion around that particular area. And we also wanted to congratulate our public works team for not just the charging stations, but we also got a wheel loader. So good job team for, for working on, on that particular grant. The mayor and I were at the Gilzeizer Drainage and, and we approved the budget and we talked about some water pumps for, for the district. So I'll leave it at that. If you'd like to add more to it. That's pretty much it. That's all we had. Budgets and pumps, the water pumps and describe the wa, trying to, I guess, you know, tie in air quality and inefficiency and use. Because right now we're in a drought and event, one day we'll have a lot of water again and got to have those drainages prepared and ready to go. Diana did a wonderful job about just reviewing on the countywide, our DA Oversight Board. I'm not going to go through all that. That was quite a lengthy conversation, but great job Diana for bringing in. And Spencer as well was at the meeting for bringing in our attorney and explaining through the Surplus Land Act and really helping the Oversight Board have a clear understanding of how to, to do this process. And that was very, very helpful. Thank you. Our city had the National Night Out and it was a great event, even though it was super hot, but it was a great event. And wanted to thank our PD and fire, a shout out to Drew and a shout out to Jamie for really being an awesome co-driver at, driving along for all the different locations. She's, she's awesome. I really, I really enjoyed talking with her and I learned quite a bit about her own personal achievements, family, and she interacts extremely well with the community. Super proud of, of her work. Diana, our city manager, also talked about our pension policy. In that pension policy discussion, we're exploring and learning pension policy, future financial options. Learned quite a bit, very well put together and thanks Spencer for bringing in. I'm, the name of the gentleman's leaving me at the moment, but quite comprehensive presentation. And then our strategic plan, excellent plan. Sierra did a great job in presenting. Sam was lukewarm in the introduction, but you know, it was, it was a great strategic plan meeting for all of us, including executive team, first levels. Did I get that right? Is it first, first levels? Maybe if I'm not, please correct me. Excellent morning on, on that. Then we also had a meeting with United States Environmental Protective Agency, high level staff. A follow up from when I went to Washington DC with Aqua. So scheduled a meeting with them to, with Ben Moody and Diana Langley. We discussed funding options, grant funding, any way to help us alleviate the cost to our community members on the wastewater outfall diffuser replacement and the electrical instrument improvements. And so I learned quite a bit. I thought it was a very productive meeting. Hopefully we can find some other revenue sources in addition to what we're already working on track for the state. Hopefully to have a plan by the end of the year. I'm hoping that we can begin the, the, the work to, to replace that awful diffuser that is necessary in our community. Then my colleague, Councilmember Boomgarden, I participated in the Backbone Support and Governance Subcommittee Meeting with Sacramento Region. So you've been actually, I thought, a lot more engaged than I have on that particular. So I'll just leave it at that. Attended a wonderful celebration of service with many of us for United Way. Our city received some nice recognition along with that. And then ended up, you know, colleagues again, naturalization ceremony reception, people becoming citizens in, to our country here. And we, we, you know, we got there like five minutes after and everybody was gone, right? Tony, thank you for extending the invitation. It was, I hope the next time we can get there, maybe earlier or something or hold them off. I don't know, but lots of things happening and appreciate you listening to me, but the work is just extremely gratifying, but thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you very much. I, I think I was a little bit more lucky than Grace was. I, I was on vacation for the vast majority of the last month and also Subuca was there dark in July. But what I have to report, the things that I've attended specific to the city was, has already been mentioned. Our pension policy again was very informative and appreciated the planning, that stuff just doesn't happen. And so the information they put together was, was very good and informative. And then our E-Team and council workshop we had recently, that was, that was really good. Sam, I think you're a little bit more than lukewarm, but you still, you know, very dynamic introduction. I also accepted a invitation from our mayor to attend a breakfast that he put together at, was it? I don't know the name of the church, Adventure Church, but of course my GPS took me to the wrong spot. I had to go to the, the old bowling alley, so went in there. But I, my main, my, not only do I appreciate the invitation, but my, my main takeaway was the speaker, Mr. Johnston. Very, I could have listened to him for a long time and I don't, and I don't really say that much about preachers at all. And he, he was very good and didn't really stick around and wallow around in a lot of the, the stuff. But some very practical words of wisdom and advice for life in general. In fact, I think I bought one of his books afterward. So he's pretty good. So I appreciate that invitation and was happy to be a part of that. And that is it. Like I said, I was, I've been out of town and my stuff were kind of dark in July. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Boomgarden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sam, I thought you were hot. Don't take that the wrong way though, okay? You had the room on fire. So the stuff that I've been involved with, National Night Out has been mentioned. I too wanted to thank Drew Mitchell for her coordination of that event. I ended up riding along with the chief of police in a black SUV when it was 108. And thankfully the air conditioner worked, but we did get a chance to interact with a lot of folks out in the, in the neighborhoods and it was good. The opportunity to meet with the public presented itself in regards to Project Home Key and the Bonanza and the mayor and myself and Diana and other members of staff. Took the opportunity to meet at Maple Park just to provide real information from the city's standpoint about what was going on with that project. Lots of great questions. I think 20, 20 to 30 people, probably about 25 people there. It just reinforced to all of us the, the, the need to get out of, of here and get out in front of folks when things are going to impact their neighborhood. It was an interesting comment was, why didn't you have this at City Hall? And, you know, we were asking, well, would you have come to City Hall or would you, they came with their lawn chairs to Maple Park. And so to me, these are the important things that sometimes we get busy. It's not because we don't want to meet with people, but we just follow, you know, a path of tradition. However, I think we've got more of these coming with some other projects that are coming up. Speaking of Home Key, continue to interact with the folks that are, are looking, are partnering with us to come up with a project. I think the project initially, the new project had a deadline for application, not a deadline, but a beginning of application in October. That's now been pushed to December, January. So that opens up a few more options and the discussions continue to be, I think fruitful and moving forward for us. Again, the United Way celebration and the acknowledgement of our city staff, what they were acknowledged for was their generous contributions to the United Way through payroll deduction. And I can't remember the exact number, but it was very meaningful and you could tell it made a difference. The pension policy, my goodness, how many times have we heard about unfunded liabilities? And what this, you know, what this city or what any other governmental agency can do on the, on the pension? We did receive a very, very enlightening discussion about helping to sort of stabilize some of that. So we have some options that we're going to continue to explore in an effort to, to help continue to smooth out the, the payments that we have to make to our employees' retirement systems. The mayor, myself and, and Ms. Langley initiated the very first, for this go around anyway, development impact fee ad hoc committee. Really the emphasis on this one is just, and Ben was there as well, thank you, Ben, was really to begin the discussion on the, the traffic study and the road fees as it relates to. There's a lot of developer interest, but they want to know what the fees are going to be. And we just had a, a new fee study done. So we've got another, another meeting there, but we'll be coming back with recommendations to the council in regards to development impact fees. The executive team workshop, again, those things are very important and I've mentioned this to others, there's a good vibe in the room. You know, there, you can tell that coming out of COVID, the employee leadership team feels engaged. At least that's my takeaway from it. And we discussed quite a few things and more to come. There's a subsequent meeting coming up. Final thing I would mention is as a member of the, the Regional Housing Authority and tonight we continued Richland Village. This is 176 units of affordable housing in Richland Housing. We are waiting to see if we can get some tax credits, but the, the, the action you took tonight allows that process or that product to continue to be viable. And I think that's quite important given what's going on in our community and the need for affordable housing. So with that, sir, that was a busy couple, three weeks.
Absolutely. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be brief. I'm going to start with North SAC Valley Integrated Regional Water Management Group. This is all things about drought. That's all we talked about and that's all there is to talk about. They've got a website up that monitors the wells. And that doesn't sound very important, but it's, it's kind of frightening what's happening across the state right now with our groundwater being dried up. And I think where you really see that is in the San Joaquin Valley. And so there was discussion about this. Those of you that get the APD Democrat noticed that Transit was on the front page. They were awarded $15 million. That goes towards 42.5 million that they need to construct and get equipment for their new facility off of North Bill Road, which will be in the proximity of Costco right here. And that is part of a one, 119.5 million that was spread over eight projects in the region. The mayor and I attended, and the city manager attended the fourth of our homeless task force meetings where we were trying to narrow, asking a community committee to narrow down and come up with a overnight parking facility for, for homeless. And we've kind of hit the brakes on that a little bit right now. We're, we're looking for some, looking for the next steps on that. So I spent my National Night Out in Alaska. It wasn't hot. It was cold, which was nice. The pension policy I messed that up, but the city manager got me up to date on that. Thank you Diana for that. The, the strategic workshop shop was very informative. It could have probably gone a couple of hours longer, the way we were going. Things that will be addressed, as the mayor said, next time, or I think maybe it was Councilman Boomgarden said next time, is the fireworks. As a, as a community, you know, have we, have we reached a point where we need to make a decision about that? Do we just keep things the way they are? Do we start bringing them, you know, putting some restriction on it? But it's getting to the point where it's, it's getting out of hand. And I think as, as a, as a, as a community, as a city, we need to, to make some hard decisions on that, as well as the RV issue. Mosquito, the good news is there are no West Nile virus, human cases in our, our county. The bad news is they had a couple of for, forerunners with foggers that were stolen, equipment that was stolen off the property. And so we, we were debating the, the, the pros and cons, whether or not we should put up some kind of security system with cameras. And so that was put on hold. So bad news there. As Councilmember Harris said, Subuca was, was counseled, as, as well as the homeless authority was counseled as well. And lastly, I did participate in SeLove last month where the main focus was Casa de Esperanza and the, the upkeep of the property there, taking out some of, some older playground equipment and, and some fencing there. So I, I did participate in a, a project with Casa de Esperanza. So I felt pretty good about that.
Mr., Mr. Vice Mayor, I just want to make a comment in regards to that too. I think if you go back in time, you'll see that there's certain of us who have participated in the walk. I've got the blisters to show it. They didn't notify us this year. I don't know.
And with that, I'll wrap it up. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. I'm going to shift gears and I'm going to go right back to Sam to start with. You've got almost like too hot, too cold. Sam, you were just right. Okay?
So. Sam, you know is a joke, right? Yeah, okay.
I'm going to keep mine very brief because I've been in a lot of these meetings with my colleagues. And so I'm going to keep it to this. To my colleagues, thank you. Keep up the good work. You did a great job reporting out and we've been busy over the last three to four weeks. To our city staff and our team, really the team building is incredible. You know, the only way that we're going to move things forward is to have the openness like we do to come together to function as a team. And I think it's really what makes this council and this E-Team and the mid-manager staff really special is we have that comfort enough to have, you know, just frank conversations to know that we're all working for the betterment of the city. Couple of things noted, it was the raise grants for Transit. That was where that came from. That puts us a little over 23 million. So we're almost two thirds of the way there. As Mr. Keith Martin put it, who's the head of the Transit. RWMA, we had interviews, but then the candidate withdrew, so we're kind of back to the drawing board again. So we will eventually find a new executive for, for that. It's, well, this one's a little different. I will explain briefly what it gets into is as all things up and down the state, people have been giving raises across the board, it just, you know, where he was at made him an offer that he couldn't turn down. So it stays there. And so we're back to the drawing board. And so hopefully we will do that and begin that transition as soon as we find another viable candidate. So stay tuned on that one. A couple of other things that's been in the hopper, you know, it was, it was brought up earlier, Ms. Essman, about the Sutter County stuff and whatnot. Just know that the city council is well aware of what went on and, you know, we are good neighbors and, you know, we'll be here to support the county in various avenues. As we've talked about supporting with fire and stuff over time, I know there's been some discussions there. But at this point in time, we are aware and just stay tuned and we'll see what the, the voters say on this. So with that, and I will close with what Councilmember Harris was talking about. My wife and I together will want to. My wife and I, together, we wanted to do something special for the community, and we started off this year with strategic partnerships. And we saw one thing that was missing was the faith-based organization, the churches coming together, because too, too often, it's church versus state instead of just the separation of church versus state. And so we have held the second prayer breakfast. We brought in Ray Johnston, who's our pastor at Bayside. He's not only a pastor, he's an author, corporate speaker. I mean, he's just, he's off the charts with what he's done. And he came up and spoke to everyone here, and one of the key things that resonated through our workshop was recharge your batteries. Make sure your batteries are recharged because if they're not, you're no good to your team that you're working with because you're burned out already. So that's, that's where that started. And just as a second note, just so everybody knows, no city funds were spent on the, on the breakfast because we were very clear on that. So we did not use taxpayers' dollars. With that, have a great another two weeks, and we will see you on the first Tuesday of September. We stand adjourned. Thank you. Good night.